Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Let's say January 23rd, we are at the Grafton Elementary School Library, and this is the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District Board Meeting. We had canceled the 5:30 budget meeting, and we are about to proceed. However, it should be noted that we, one of our members had a death in the family, and another's had a notice as a consequence. Our Board of Six is now a Board of Three, and that is not a quorum. Under the rules that have been long established for these sort of things, that means that we can continue as an information gathering body, particularly with the witness of the camera, but we cannot vote on monies. We cannot vote on appointments, but we can listen, and we can plan and make recommendations for when the Board collects sufficient members to conduct legal business. So with that noted, this meeting is being called to order in that fashion. We will not approve Board Minutes because we do not have sufficient members to do that. We can't move from four. Let me ask if there are adjustments to the agenda, given what I've just told you. I'm going to assume that number seven is not going to happen tonight, Doug, because we don't have enough members to approve your rebid for the new roof. Sorry.
No, that's fine. I was on the wrong page, and I thought you said adjournment, and I was like, that's not...
No, no, no. You're a little premature, but good on you.
Sorry, wrong page.
Second.
Roger that.
Okay, guys. So this is, we are now, I'm assuming that we will continue with the meeting in the order in which it's created for now. But as I say, because we have a quorum issue, we will try to do a lot of this as informally as we can. If there are, I do see we have members of the public.
Yeah, two members.
Two members. Well, that's, you know, it's a substantial portion of the population. If this was New York City, they'd have to have a hall. You want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Hardy Merrill.
Yep.
Nancy Merrill.
Yes. And just for both the folks that are watching on Fact TV, and for benefit of our attendees, why don't we go from right to left and introduce ourselves?
You're right, or the camera, right?
I know.
Good question. Stage right.
My name is Josh Aberman. I am the Board of Quarter.
Doug Cassius, Principal of Westminster Schools.
I'm Cheryl Charles. I represent Westminster on the forcibly merged Athens, Grafton, and Westminster School Board, and also serve on the Supervisory Union Board.
I'm Jack Brier. I pick the short straw. I'm the Chair of this entity, and I'm also a member of the High School Board and serve as an alternate on the SU Board.
Lynn Morgan. I'm representing Athens on this transition board and an alternate on the SU Board.
Liz Hardy, Principal of Grafton Elementary.
Lynn Keary, Assistant Superintendent of Schools.
And I'll send her my welcome to the Merrills for their attendance. We're hoping you'll make this a habit. We're moving on to...
Is the public coming?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't ask you if you wanted to say anything.
No, I basically just want to listen, you know, and hear what's going on.
I appreciate you.
We're both listeners in Grafton, just to let you know that. We're town officials, so we're just...
Nothing to do with it.
We're just here to learn a little bit. And I'm familiar with, you know, reading some of the documentation, and I understand the financial implications pretty much, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
I feel bad for you. Okay. With that said, let us move on to reports. Number five. Lynn, that's you.
The superintendent's report is included, and my understanding is we're going to be having those on the website. We have a new website. Superintendent kind of had it up last night. We didn't really get around to looking at it.
It was kind of up this morning, and "kind of" is a good word.
It's in the early stages, but I would like everyone to know that if you go under Central Office and you see Superintendent, you'll see the superintendent's name, his email address, his phone number. You'll be able to get in touch with him, or you'll be able to get in touch with me, and then there's the letter that we welcome people. So that's in there. A lot of our policies are up, most importantly, our bullying policy and our bullying and harassment procedures. And so that's a very exciting thing. And these, our Central Office reports should be up there. And as you can see from it, there's just a lot of pictures too, which is very exciting. But briefly, for the audience, the superintendent attended a Vermont Superintendent's Association Conference at Lake Maury, actually in November, and he listed all of the different topics. And we also had Leadership Team Professional Development. You can see a great picture of Doug and Liz in there. And it's about Dare to Lead by Brené Brown, not Brenna, but Brené Brown. And so they talked about Let's Take Action in Rockingham, which I thought was pretty successful. The town got together in Rockingham, and they talked about a lot of things. And they worked on UBTech, which is a grant the superintendent got, and they have these great robotics. And I think the principals can speak to it, because they were working on building robots. And so we were able to get those resources free, and it's exciting. And here's a wonderful picture of Liz building a robot. They had a mock drill, hello, they had a mock drill at the high school. And then I talk a lot about the Consolidated Federal Grants. This year, we had $3,265,000. So we had a lot of money in our Consolidated Federal Grants. I just sent in another amendment today. But we support the Homeless Liaison, and she, and you can read in here how busy she is. She's got Donors Choose. She's got all kinds of great stuff to get students clothing, sneakers, socks. We have a whole storage area of personal hygiene products, and she really works hard at helping those students. We also have a Tobacco Use Prevention Grant. And again, we have an education team, and we have three individuals working on that. And they have teamed up with Springfield Medical Care Systems, Title One Greater Falls Connection, and Deerfield Valley Community Partnership. And we're presenting an informational session next Wednesday night on vaping. And I will tell you, our Wellness Committee met today, and we had even more from Poison Control about vaping and the connection with marijuana, the THC they put in the little, they call it liquid, nicotine or whatever, and that's pretty poisonous. If you're inhaling, it's bad enough, but if it touches your skin, or if children get it, or whatever, it's very dangerous. But they burn, they heat the chemicals up to over 480 degrees, and it really messes with the chemicals. So, of course, people are getting sick and dying, so that's a big deal. And we're going to educate parents with pizza and cookies, but actually have a demonstration, not a sit-down listen, but actually, this is what it looks like.
What's the date and time for that again?
Wednesday night, six to seven, at the high school. And it's the 29th, that is next Wednesday.
I just want, the camera was rolling.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. And we also have our Early Education Outreach Coordinator. We support that. And they have, she does so many activities, but she has playgroups during the week. She has one over at Westminster. She's wonderful in the summer. Every week, they go on an educational trip. We just got a $4,500 grant from Mount of Scutney Hospital and Healthcare Prevention Network for our Restorative Practices Initiative, which is Safe and Healthy Schools. So we're really excited about that. We're waiting to hear if we won yet another grant from the Vermont Agency. It's actually the Vermont Agency of Agriculture School Nutrition Program for $15,000 for this district, the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. And I'll let Liz fill you in on that after, but yes. This is, last year, we also won $15,000 for the middle school. We also support our STEM Coordinator, Christina Smith, and she is bringing engineering lessons to our elementary schools and working on our science curriculum, which we will also have up on our curriculum page on the new website, the science curriculum, the science lessons for the teachers. And the goal, of course, we set for this year with our Continuous Improvement Grant, was to have every student in K-8 engage in at least one engineering unit, like a big project dealing with engineering. And I think we're almost there. She did talk a lot, she has a blog, which is listed here, and she did talk about what she was doing with fifth grade. And I guess it was, there was a lot of learning involved, so they enjoyed it. And so Missy again is talking about all the professional development. We're really, really, you know, learning.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask a question before you transition to Missy's work in the professional development. A couple of clarifications. We have STEAM or we have STEM? STEM being Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And sometimes we refer to including arts as well?
Yeah, so STEAM, yeah. STEAM, STEM, but it is STEAM. They, yeah, they design, and they do engineering, and they decorate it and do some art and creativity around it.
I'm also going to jump in just for a second, partly because I think it's important that people, including whoever might be watching, understand that one of the real distinguishing characteristics of Wyndham Northeast that I'm proud about is the degree to which we have become grant hawks, if you will. I think that particularly for new programs, programs where there's innovation, it allows us to experiment without making the taxpayers underwrite the experimentation. It gives us a chance to find out if stuff works. And it also means that some of the nice-to-have things can be acquired without that being an issue of debate, because there are guests.
And related to that, building on that, what, for the public again, what you just went through as a list of services, are all those funded by the 3.2 million in federal grants or other grants but are not paid for by the taxpayers here?
Absolutely not.
And private.
And to say that, it just reminded me, because I write so many. Tomorrow, I'm busy writing, putting in the After-School, 21th Century After-School for these two folks. I'm taking what the director has written, and I'm putting that into the grant management page. But also too, and that's going to be a big grant, but you suggested a grant, I can't remember the name, and I applied for it for Restorative Practices, but it's for playground, it's a training in playground skills.
Like Play 360 or something?
Yeah, that's it. And that's what we applied for, from your suggestion.
Right.
I have to follow up on that, but I...
And Kathleen said that she would, you know, if you want to help, she can make herself available, and she's got a pretty good track record up at Dartmouth with this sort of stuff.
Right.
So...
Yeah, so that was a good grant too. So as a grant manager, yeah, I can't write every single grant, but I can certainly, we've done quite a bit, and we did win the Mount of Scutney, and we, of course, got the Farm School and all those. And so we're really excited to bring them together to combine with what we do get from the federal government and the state. And I just want you to know that we are really taking advantage of those state funds and the title funds. The Title One, which is academic, you know, supporting academic growth, Title Two, which is professional development, and Title Four, which is Safe and Healthy Schools and Technology, so...
I'm going to make two other comments, and then just, I want to make sure I'm not cutting anybody off.
Well, don't get me talking.
The, well, you are talking. This is your report. The first one is on the robotics. There is a, New England is, outside of Vermont, is actually fairly famous for the robotics competitions. They have them at the elementary as well as high school level. It's kind of a big deal. There are cash awards for people that win them. There is money available for people that participate in them. It is a serious thing in terms of being considered for schools. Your school, your football team might win the state championship, and you'll get this, but if they win the robotics competition in New England, you'll get calls from colleges that you wouldn't normally get calls from. So that's one. Second one, your webpage. I'm so sorry to say this. It needs some work at the very beginning. The thing that you're missing is that there's no splash that says, "Look for the superintendent's report today," or "Look for this, or look for that." You have room. The bottom part of that is exactly what that space should be for, but nobody's going to look at a page that is what's the same today, tomorrow, and 10 years from now. That's the place where you put the stuff you want people to get excited about. If you want engagement, whether it is your report or the business we had last night about the questions that employees were asking about their pensions, that's the place where that can go. And you'll be astonished how much your usership will go up if it looks inviting and there's actually something when they open that up. So this is...
That's great advice.
Webpage 101.
Yeah, we're just starting, but you're right. We need to really put the information out, because one of the most important things that I know Chris, the superintendent, strives for, and I strive for too, is transparency. But if we're not telling them...
Then ask them to go look for it.
How transparent, you know, that's true, if we're not giving it to them. So anyway, his blog is great, but we need to put his blog front and center. There's a ton of information on that blog, the superintendent's blog, but we will be working on that. So to go with the, Missy with her professional development, a lot of that money does come from Title Two, which I put together. They did work on the UBT Tech, and I saw Christina taking those kits away to bring to the kids. So they did have the teacher, the principals, and the administrators working on those. This real team is part of our initiative in our SIP, which is MTSS, Multiple Tiered Systems of Support.
Sipping, Continuous Improvement.
Our Continuous Improvement Plan.
Jack's rule, whenever we're using an acronym, we explain it. Because that way, I won't feel stupid when I don't remember what it is.
Right, so the real team means reaching and educating all learners, which is a Multiple Tiered System of Support, which is in here too. So she, they have that collaboration, the Title Two grant funds pay for that collaboration with Landmark College. So that's been going on, and it's been very exciting. Paraprofessionals had professional development with the teachers and the administrators, a restorative practice overview right before the holiday break. And my understanding is that it went pretty well. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that, because this is a great initiative, and it will, it will, first year's tough, you know, but it will come to fruition, and it will, I'm hoping that it'll be very successful. So the middle school, they worked on their professional learning, personalized learning plans, which is also in our Continuous Improvement Plan. So everything is connected coming down, and they're working on student-led parent-teacher conferences, which is probably something that we'll probably have in our Goal Three this year too. I just gave a huge assignment to my principals, but really, just tell me what you need, and I'll help you do it all. So the high school is working on lockdowns and all of those safety things. So Student Services, he spoke to the meeting last night. He, they're looking, again, as he spoke last night at the meeting, about getting a consultation, a Board-Certified Behavioral Interventionist, BCBI, to come in and really consult, rather than just hiring more people to, you know, but to really consult about what it is we need to be doing to help students who are having trouble coping with the school environment, for whatever reason, but we need to look with a trauma-informed lens. What is making these children behave like that? So, and then, of course, this great teacher working in the Intensive Needs Hard Duty. She won an award. Our Director of Restorative Practices, Jessie Hall, talks a lot about what the training that he's done. He talks about PAIR, which is Pause, Acknowledge, Initiate, and Restore. So, for instance, when a student does something...
Is it part of the restorative justice?
Yeah, restorative practices. So it's not all about discipline when they re-enter the school. It's about getting to the root of what happened, helping that student understand, and how do we mend those things? So he was naughty, teacher, you know, whatever, the principal, whatever. How does he mend that relationship? How do we help mend the relationship with the child so they really are feeling restored? Harley talks a lot, Harley is our school nutrition person. He talks a lot about the food that, especially, he's really developing our district into a great catering service too. And they've reached, 76% of our students is doing really, our students are really becoming, participating in our meals. I know that our principal here will talk about, she's had a few evenings where they talk about food. Parents come in, they get to enjoy food, and they get to be part of the harvest of the month. So exciting things are happening. We are going to be talking about, the state is trying to put forward, I don't know if it's breakfast or all meals, but a statewide universal meals, which would be like, oh, yay for all of us.
As long as they do a better job at it than they've done some of these other things.
Here's some pictures from our other grant, from our Agency of Agriculture grant, putting in a new oven, the $15,000. We got a stove and an oven installed in Fellis Falls Middle School, which is very exciting. Ricky's talking about our UBTech again, those robot kits, and he's not really talking yet about our new webpage, but we will be working on it. They, we are testing, I think we're almost done, with the Measures of Academic Progress Winter Testing. And Technology Help Desk is pretty quiet, which is good news. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions, additional questions, Lynn, anything? No?
Just one. One of the statistics you just quoted was actually specific to Central Elementary School, where it was lunch participation is up to 76%. I don't see numbers from Westminster, Athens, and Grafton. And I would just ask Harley for the next report to add those in as well. And it's breakfast and lunch.
I think he was just highlighting this nutrition manager, Erica. But he does say, we serve 7,000 lunches in December. It's about 59% participation, and 71 of that 59 overall was for free and reduced students. So we could, I can certainly ask him...
Just ask him for a little more specificity, so we understand which the numbers are applying to.
Yeah.
It's all good, and it's improving, and we all know that the quality of the food has improved immensely, and that we're supporting local food growers and producers, all of which is great. So just a little bit of refinement of the report would help us.
We're in our second year of the All Supervisory Union Program, and it sounds as though this year is, last year was good, this year sounds like it's going to be even better.
There are a couple of things that would be also useful to have, and have from Harley. One is, unfortunately, it has to do with waste, because the concern in these types of programs, and one of the risks of going to a much fresher food program is you can't put it back in the refrigerator afterwards. And I'd just like to hear a little bit about how that's being handled. And the second is Harley discussed possibly leveraging some of our costs by doing what some other districts have done in New England, which is to serve the Meals and Wheels programs in their local areas. And it's turned out to be a small cash flow to offset the cost of our food. And I thought we were going to hear from him about the progress he was making. We had asked him to have a business plan together. Actually, for last night's meeting, obviously, there were a lot of things going on at last night's Supervisory Union meeting, but we still are looking for that. It's really important for us to see something, so we can make a yea or nay decision on it. So, just, you know, there it is.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We are now on to Westminster Principal's report.
Hi. So, yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about, we had ours in-service on Tuesday, first half of which was the MAPS training up at the SU, which went really well, and teachers seem to feel much better about how to analyze the results and what they're going to be able to do with that, particularly along with the growth patterns and accelerated growth versus achievement. So I was kind of excited. At Westminster, we spent the afternoon talking about student-led conferences and our student celebrations, which has shifted. Like, we've been playing with the concept for a couple of years now about how do you recognize students for being themselves, for making growth, and what's the appropriate way to do that, and had a lot of conversations, good conversations about like intrinsic versus extrinsic motivation, and how do you like get to that place of intrinsic motivation? Kind of the push and pull about like celebrating what our values are as a school and as a school community, but at the same time matching those values and not, you know, rewarding like honor roll, or, you know, something like that, which is where we wanted to go. So those really productive conversations led us to connect better our student celebrations that are going to start happening kind of on a monthly or ongoing basis within the classrooms, a little bit more by teacher discretion, but we split it out from doing the whole school celebrating and kids getting like the little certificate and sharing stories about them, to kids setting goals with their teachers in their rooms, and when they meeting their individual goals, or when a group of them have met their goals, having a class celebration and doing that as a, again, as a smaller community within their classroom, yeah, you've met this goal. Some teachers have some innovative ideas, like fourth grade wants to do, every time a kid reaches a goal, they get a brick, and then they're going to use a brick. They're going to try to use ECO bricks from Studio Y, which I think might be a bad idea, just because I'm not sure how well-construted those ECO bricks are per se, but, and then make a chair, or a stool, or a bench that they can then use in their classrooms, with this idea that all of their goals come together, kind of a symbolizing. So, pretty neat, but it'll also help us, you know, we did student-led conferences. Last year was the first time, we kind of started planning in January-ish.
Walking back.
What's that?
Student-led conferences.
Yeah. And I think our parent survey results were really positive, and teachers were really positive about how that went. It was a great community feeling, because when we do regular parent-teacher conferences, they happen all the time, all over, you know, like Thursday afternoon at seven o'clock, or, you know, in the mornings, or whenever. But when we did student-led conferences, it was from six, like 3:30 to 6:30, which is a little tough around parents, but it was a great community feel, because the entire school's cycling through within that three-hour span. So it was kind of a new feeling. So anyway, so now with these student celebrations and these student-led conferences, they're just kind of helping us tie those, so that student-led conferences aren't just this like, oh, cool thing we do at the end of the year, you know, shiny little badge thing, but making it a more daily part of kids' lives or part of how we believe in instructing kids and talking to kids about growth. So that was good. Yeah, winter sports, off and running, there's no snow.
No snow.
So that's a problem. But not for a chemo, at least for the downhill skiing, which is where we're still going this year. We have four days left, weather-dependent.
Ice skiing, we'll toughen them up.
Yeah, no, it's toughened up.
Yeah, don't worry about that.
Very hard features now. Not too many, not any more than normal. So all schools in Vermont were required to do the PFA, PFAS testing. I had no idea. Phenol, penyl, phenyl, al, it's the Aaron Brockovich thing.
So chlorinated carbon compound, courtesy, it's... So, it's a chlorinated carbon compound, courtesy, it's basically an ingredient, Teflon. And it's, some of our local manufacturers were very enthusiastic about it, and not very enthusiastic about cleaning up after it. And it turned out to be an aerosol that dispersed for miles.
Yeah, so we had, so, you know, it was in the news last year, because they found some of it in Benetton, and it was-
We hear, we, we had, we had lots of fun about that year.
Fortunately, while I got the, like, I don't know, twenty-page report for our, the Center School and the West West School, I couldn't understand any of it, but I had Adam call and get it to, anyways, we're way under the, any of the minimums that we need to have for that. We have another lead testing. The state wanted us all to retest all the taps for lead. You know, we test all the time, because we have our own water system, which like Grafton probably does, but that one will be happening sometime in April, so.
A question about that, do you guys test for radon? Because you're at the bottom of, you know, you're, you're at a relatively low spot in your area, and so that's a thing that tends to collect a lower response.
It's not part of the standard repertoire of what they've been testing. I feel like the state was putting out like a grant last year for do that. We tried to get on that, but that might be confusing that with the lead or the PFA.
The, the PFA thing is biological nonsense, because in fact, the, the level false positives at the level they're testing is fifty percent. And we probably went through that with our fault, with our positive, because we didn't really do that much change, and it was fine the next time we tested, which tells you a lot, because water doesn't change like that. So, but, but the, but the other is actually a thing, and would be worth your finding out about if possible.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good idea, good question. Yeah, so the, I just had dates on your horizon. So, our winter concert's coming up on January thirtieth at six-thirty PM. There will be no parking from the doors this year, just be advised. And then February twenty-eighth is a Glow in the Dark Dance Party by the PTO. Very excited, or, so far, we're getting most, except for skiing, the second most parent participation in signing up to get going on that. So, I don't know what it's going to look like, because we've never done it before. And it would be a terrible idea to turn off the lights and have a whole bunch of kids running around, hopping on candy. Which should be fun. Yeah.
Sounds like you have excitement, I have a few.
Jane?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a, I've, the Glow in the Dark Dance Party, and the, the question about a sound system and fundraising, and where the PTO funds are that have been raised in the past. Can you just kind of address that, since I've been getting some community questions around that?
Sure. So, I'll rewind to make, not to confuse anybody, but just to hopefully explain it all. So, we used to have two separate parent organizations. We had the West West PTO, and then we had the Center School Team. And they had separate accounts. Those accounts were checkbooks, taken out in their name, using the school's tax ID number. And so, as new accounting and auditing systems were coming about, and that those two, you know, obviously, the West West School became Studio Y, and consolidated that down, we put all of those accounts into one account within the school's student activity funds, which is, you know, through TD Bank. It gets audited every year, but it is-
It's a fund, it's a fund of yours as opposed to five-one, C-three.
Yeah, it was always like our accountability. Like, we had to get the PTO books audited and everything like that in the past. But we didn't actually have, for a while, I wasn't even a signer on one of the accounts, which was an awkward position to be in.
It's also a contributing policy, because we went through this with the high school and set policy around, around support organizations, because we had, we had some very enthusiastic, but not particularly communicative boosters at the high school, and found that there was money being raised for things we had no idea about. Want to keep an eye on that.
So, so we do have the, the combination of the PTOs, most of the money of which came from team, because the West West PTO spent it down for the pavilion and before Grafton mine. However, there was, I know I'm on camera, I was quoting this, but somewhere over six thousand dollars that was in there, and I can get the exact figure for the next meeting, because I know it's all in spreadsheets and stuff on Trish's computer. Anyway, so that's, that's kind of where it's at, and it's there. And we, so we were talking about using, generating some, hey, excitement and purpose behind getting people involved, are involved, will get involved, because you're always playing about the sound system, help us get a new one. Ta-da, mean, met. But one of the problems we've been having is that at the PTO meetings, we're not having large groups of people, so it's like, you know, two or three people. So, deciding to spend that quantity of money, it's just been a little tough. And so, anyway, so that's, that's kind of where we're at. We're hoping to get just a little bit more so we can afford a sound system. Over the summer, we were able to get at least one quote, though we tried for more. Then, and that's kind of what we're basing the goal at, and then obviously, we'd go back out.
What was that quote, do you remember?
It's like six thousand, seven hundred and XX dollars. So, not cheap, but within, kind of within range. And then we also added on to that, they were looking to try to see if we can get a matching set of ukuleles.
Oh, ukulele jealousy.
Yeah, 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 well, I'm just staring at them all the time.
These were bought by our, by the Graftons PTO, just to explain what the-
Parent-teacher group.
Yeah, parent-teacher group.
Right.
And that's, just thank you for the hoisted moment, but tired about that. The, we're, we have concerns, both at the high school and at West, that we think that parent-teacher groups are a great source of feedback. They can help with everything from facilities to getting those nice-to-have things, to occasionally feedback if you need it, and you're overseeing teacher performance, you've got a source of feedback if you, if you have a vibrant PTO, and you don't, and you don't have that, that data set. If you don't have one, that's a concern at the high school, and it's a concern at the, at Westminster with your consolidation. So, I don't know how that gets fixed, except to admonish our Westminster members and friends of the school to get, do whatever they can to sort of get a little dynamite under the seats there. All right, now, I'm going to switch over to our next report.
Yesterday, we had our third winter sport visit. It was a beautiful day. We are low on snow, but the sunshine was really nice. And we have three more days out, which is great. So, we're going to Grafton Trails for cross-country, Keene Ice for ice skating, and then Stratton Mountain for downhill skiing, snow party. Yeah, our winter scot, our winter concert was last Thursday, so it was Marvel World's fair, each classroom took a country. They prepared, they learned about the country in their classrooms. They cooked food during the day. When families came in the evening, they were able to visit the classrooms and taste. And then the music teacher performed, had them perform various songs and dances from each country that they learned about. Our drama club that met on Mondays performed a little play during the concert. And then our band also performed a variety of songs. All of our classes have gone through one excursion to Studio Y, except for kindergarten, so our one-two, or three-four, and our five-six. So, after working with Janelle Beard since the fall, students in grades one through six each took a trip for one day. During this day, they met the conductor, worked together to solve problems, and participated in the maker space. So, now, teachers will meet with Janelle to plan which content area will be covered during their next Studio Y visit. As Doug had mentioned, we participated in the MAPS training this past Tuesday. All students, pretty much, except for a few absences, we're still trying to get, catch a couple of kids up, are, have finished their second round of MAP testing. In the afternoon, my staff and I met here with Ann BT, and we dove deeper into the Fountas and Al Classroom Phonics Word Study and Spelling portion of the reading system. It's materials-heavy, so we spent a lot of time prepping materials, but also learning the philosophy behind how we approach language and how students approach language, and how being curious about words, and being curious about word parts, and how that helps us as readers and writers. Next Monday and Tuesday, I'll be attending a literacy leadership seminar in Leslie University with Ann BT as well. It'll be this upcoming Monday and Tuesday, and then two days in March. So, it is led by Irene Fountas and Gaysel Pennell, the two authors of our current reading system, Fountas and Al Classroom. And the seminar will focus on how to support teachers' literacy instruction in K six. We'll also explore different affecting teaching, student assessment, coaching, and supervision on how we can improve students' reading and writing. The last thing I want to mention.
Go ahead. You're, you're being very brief.
Yeah, I am. Oh, right.
For my, for your other colleagues, by the way.
Westminster and Grafton were awarded the Vermont Agency of Agriculture Farm School Grant, so in Grafton, it was a fifteen thousand dollar grant. So, in Grafton, that will look like expanded school gardens, cooking carts, and a greenhouse, so we can grow all year. Lynn had mentioned that we are doing our, our Harvest of the Month lunches on our half-days, so we've had two Harvest of the Month lunches. Our next one will be in March, and so it'll highlight the April syrup, which is exciting. And then, we are also, I wanted to put this out to the school board, our annual Green Eggs and Ham breakfast is March fourth, and we are always looking for a community member to read during our breakfast. So, if you would like to read-
What day of the week is that?
Or, it is a Wednesday.
Oh, good, so it's not a Tuesday. Give me a call in advance, and we'll, we'll harangue, I'll, I'll mention that and harangue our swipe board in a new place else, I get a chance to beat up about this. All right.
I do have a question, but Liz is doing something.
All right.
Oh, I just wanted to show you that these are the questions that were asked last night.
Oh, good, that's all up now.
And these are the questions, and over here, this important information, I believe, are the notes from last night, the notes of the meeting. Yeah.
That just reminds me, we have an E, Committees and Town Boards, and while it isn't a committee, per se, we have members at WNESU. And I'm going to ask our members, actually, one member, if she would mind doing a sort of a very short summary when we get to that of the meeting that we had last night, because I think it's something that people that weren't there ought to hear about, just, would you mind?
Oh, no, that's fine.
Okay, fine.
But I do have a question for Liz. If you could go back and explain a little bit more about the grant, the fifteen thousand, and I, I heard cooking carts and greenhouse and garden, is it a grant to the building here?
It's a grant to the district.
To the district?
So, it'll be used for both schools. And we have a team, myself and two of my teachers, and Doug has a team from his school. We'll be going next Wednesday to the onboarding meeting at Vermont Tech in-
Randolph.
Randolph, exactly. And we'll really plan out how we're going to use this. But a team went this past summer to the Shelburne Farms Institute, and they kind of laid out what our year wanted to look like as we embrace the farm to school. And this grant will just help support those efforts.
That, that's, that's wonderful. And then I know that, just because I've had conversations with the Grafton Nature Museum, that you also have an opportunity there. We've got more land at the Westminster site, but you've got some opportunities over here with the Nature Museum just across the road, and that new lot.
Yes.
Bit of land that they have, potentially. I know you need to work with the, the town and all of that, but it's very exciting. So, congratulations to all of you involved with that. And it's building on last year's work as well, other things you've, you've been doing.
Yeah, we did, we definitely utilized the Nature Museum, and Jay and Vanessa visited a staff meeting just last week or the week before, and talked specifically how, how teachers can access. And our PTO is very supportive in funding that to some extent. And then I know we have local funding as well.
And how they might be able to help in the summer, potentially?
Right, absolutely, and we'll hopefully have a summer program here, too.
Okay, good, thank you.
Just for context, since we are merging two very different schools that have funded their own thing very differently for many years, one of the things we're trying to do is both, if consolidation is a final thing, we really have an obligation to harmonize our programs to the greatest extent possible. There, what we have now is quite localized to the physical environments these schools are in. In Grafton, one of the distinguishing characteristics of the school is that because we have a number of small community organizations, we've, and this is something that Liz has worked on, and actually, it's been a thing we've been doing for years here, is to really put the community into community-based education, and trying to figure out ways to take two different approaches to that and pick the best from both, while giving everybody a chance to go run up and do their own thing if the Supreme Court says they can later, is one of the great challenges we're facing.
But, but Jake, and I'd ask David to build on this, too. One of the other things that we've talked about so long here through the supervisory union, and as we wait for the Supreme Court's ruling, we also care about the whole of the supervisory union, and our collaboration with Rockingham, including Saxons River and Bellows Falls. And so, in part, we've, we've lost a bit of that momentum for collaboration throughout the supervisory union because of the legal issues that are going on.
That was going to be my question to both of you, which was, in that period where we, we worked on this alternative governance for all four towns, Rockingham, Athens, Westminster, and Grafton, we, we talked about ways in which all the elementary schools, all the schools, but the elementary schools in this case could cooperate. And I was just wondering, to what degree, obviously, there's a fair amount of communication right here, right now, but to what degree there is with Saxons River and Central Elementary? Are you, are you getting together with them very much, or, you know, how, how, how much communication is there at this point?
Well, we have a regular admin team meeting, so where we can meet together and discuss-
Our principals' meetings.
Yeah, principals' meetings, right.
We have grade-level meetings, where the teachers from the whole district, like all the first-grade teachers get together, all the eighth-grade teachers, all the seventh, right on down. So, that's, that's been a really exciting addition to our PD calendar. And hopefully, next year, as we grow in the data, and we, understanding the new data that we're looking at, the teachers will share their expertise, their successes, and their questions with their peer, with their grade-level peers. They've never really had the opportunity to meet like that. So, we're pretty excited about that, too.
The failure hasn't been at supervisory union, hasn't been by principals, it's actually been the school boards. We had, we had made a pledge to ourselves and to our communities when people advised against merger, that we would continue with the alternative governance model irrespective of what the state did. And that committed us to at least two meetings of all the boards every year. And we are about three months past due for that. I would ask you and, and Chris and David to see if we can get that on the agenda and do that. I would think that it would be a nice thing to do fairly soon after, after the March elections, and start to put that into our regular schedule, because there are a lot of things that are being done here that we like to think are leadership items that could be transmitted. We've got it on our Farm-to-Table program, we've got it in terms of how we've leveraged PT, parent-teacher groups, we've got it in terms of our foundation and grants work, and we've got it certainly in terms of the literacy. And these are problems that need to be solved across the district. We also have some policy stuff that needs to be looked at across the district, and it's a good opportunity to get everybody on the same page.
I, I will tell you, I'm blessed, because I have these two principals to work with, and-
They told me that.
But I don't really work with the other principals, because we have kind of like, you know, but I think I'm really lucky, because they're so innovative, they're so creative, they're so willing to, to take that step and that risk, to bring, you know, to just raise the bar for their schools. I, and, and I am proud, and I, I have to tell you, I don't know much about the other schools as much as I should, but I do, because I do work with grants, and I do. But as far as overseeing principals, the connection I have here is just much better than, you know, it's just stronger, but I would say to you that I think we're very lucky. If two districts had to come together, and two principals had to work together, two boards had to come together, this would be the best ones to do it.
I'm glad you weren't testifying at court.
No, but I'm just saying, regardless, whether they were separate or together.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to shag the business manager's report, because this manager is not here, because I told the business man- manager is not here because I told the business manager not to come, because she's got better things to do. Um, we, um, you'll, you all know to a certain extent, but maybe not to the extent that you might, that, uh, business office has been having, it's been essentially one crisis after another. It's, um, a very large part due to our volunteering to pick up a state-mandated, uh, finance management software package that turned out to be mostly fourteen-year-old garbage, uh, and, uh, the, uh, made up of two components that were never intended to work together. Um, and just because you put them in the same box doesn't mean that they work, and they haven't, and, uh, everybody knows that the payroll issues have been just nothing short of cata-, catastrophic. Uh, Rick and I have been signing checks manually at nine o'clock at night on a couple of occasions, not much fun. The, uh, staff is at the point of tears, and we've had a couple of, of employee meetings where people expressed, uh, uh, their general hatred of all of us, um, and I can't say as I blame them because it's my money, I'd be pretty annoyed too. Um, the reason that she is not here is not only because, uh, there were more issues around, um, around, um, benefits package, because apparently the same software problem that was preventing electronic transfer of money to, um, to payroll was apparent, may have been affecting the electronic transfer of money to the benefits package. That would be my guess based on the description I got from Edie this morning, and, um, we, among the places where it's followed things up is, uh, numbers get put into our budget, uh, program and crazy stuff comes out the other end, and rather than have her heroically trying to manually fix it or give us something that was funny again, um, since we have, we delayed our, um, our meeting until April as opposed to other districts so that there 'd at least be a little legal room, so we're gonna be in April, everybody else is gonna be in March, but, uh, it means that I figured she could give us a good leaving alone and get the other stuff taken care of tonight, so that's what she's doing, and, um, I hope you all understand, so that's why we didn't have a budget meeting and that's why we're not gonna talk budgets. Um, uh, the, I, I wanted folks to understand that we will have a budget. Uh, the, my expectation is we will do it much the way we did last year, that there will be, there will be the items that people, there'll be building-level budgets, a list of the things that we have in common, that if there is, I don't think it's that big a list, and, um, and then do the addition that I did last year on, on a single sheet of paper, and that's what we will go to the voters with. Um, the, I would like Cheryl to talk briefly about the decision about the budget for the supervisory union.
Could I just interrupt?
Yeah.
For just a second about that, about the budget.
Yes.
And that is that, just to make a note, uh, that, uh, April nine is farther away than the beginning of March.
Yep.
But it's not that far.
Not that.
And if you, and if you count backwards, we need to have a figure settled by March nine, or actually I think more like March second.
Yeah, that's right.
And that means, uh, there's, and here we are pushing February pretty quickly.
And we have four weeks until break, there's a week where no one's working, well, everything, central office is working, but principals aren't.
People tend to wait.
My, my, I, it's a very good point, uh, I, it really just became clear that if we were just going to go through what we went through the last couple sessions, I just did not want to waste your time or hers doing that.
No, no, I, I, yeah, I'm just noting that so that we can try to.
I will say brace yourself because we're probably going to have a special session, uh, so that we can make that deadline, because I really want, I, I don't want to be pushing March second, I want to get this done next month, and, uh, if we have to have two meetings to do it, then we'll have two meetings to do it. I think we're close enough that we probably can do it in one, but just in case I'm wrong, I want to make sure we have backups so that we don't get crammed into a corner. Um, that, speaking of crammed into a corner, you make decisions when you're crammed into a corner, and some of those decisions showed up last night, um, and this is where I'm going to have Cheryl talk about the NESU budget meeting, which I was late for due to some medical things, and, uh, you want to tell people what, what happened and what we did with that?
Well, last, last evening there were two meetings, uh, for the supervisory union, one at five thirty was the budget meeting, and that was a continuation of a whole series of meetings that have been held to try to work with, uh, the budget for the whole of the supervisory union, which includes those federal grants and those kinds of services that are not handled at the local, at the local level. Um, in the, in this meeting last night, followed up on one where the supervisory union budget committee and then the full board, as I understand it, asked the staff to reduce the budget overall by two hundred to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, just thinking that the amount warranted, uh, that kind of scrutiny. And so a combination of the business manager, Edie Cole, and the superintendent, and probably Lynn, you and others, helped with this, they did reduce the budget. One line item in there that they recommended pulling out, this was their decision for that, the line item, was a school bus. We're having an issue getting enough bus drivers. They decided right now that that was a place where a savings could be made in the form of ninety-eight thousand dollars for one bus. Uh, in the end, the staff together proposed what turned out to be a two hundred sixty-four thousand dollar, uh, reduction in the budget, uh, and, uh, ultimately, last evening, the budget committee did vote to take a budget figure to the full board, the supervisory union board. It's a combination of, I'm gonna give you some approximates, I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Yeah.
But about ten million dollars is, that are actually taxpayer-generated funds locally, and another three point two or something like that, three point five, that would come in from the kind of work that, uh, that, that, Dr. Carey was describing earlier in terms of federal funds and that kind of thing. So last evening then, following the budget committee meeting, because of the kind of difficulties with e-finance, the software program that is state-mandated, but which we, um, unfortunately ended up being early adopters of at a time we thought that was a good idea, and our business team thought it was a good idea, um, the early adopters here, uh, have discovered that it's just so fraught with so many problems. Jack was describing that earlier, really more problems than we can go into here, but it was, it, it, it is not a strong software program, it does not work, they didn't provide training that we thought would come with it in the beginning, and so now we are so far behind, uh, as local communities here, we, I mean, as Jack would often say, we would, we would expect to have had an audit fully completed by now, we'd have, would have expected to have full budget numbers by the fall, and we're still waiting for accurate figures to help us create a budget for, to take to the voters, uh, for their approval at this, uh, at this April meeting. But because there were and are so many payroll-related, benefits-related and other issues that came up, and grievances coming from teachers and support staff and others, last night it came to such, uh, a point that we moved the normal meeting from the supervisory union small conference room to the, uh, the Bellows Falls center, central school auditorium. And in, in the way it turned out, I hope I'm not speaking too long right now.
That's fine.
Um, the, um, we did the normal, David Clark, who's the chair of the supervisory union board, called the meeting to order, there, uh, and there were some modest adjustments to the agenda to allow, for example, for an update from the finance office about what is going on with pay, payroll, but when Mr. Clark opened everything up for public comment, we ended up spending the next hour and a half approximately, listening to very serious, real concerns from people throughout the community, most of whom were speaking as employees, whether support staff or, um, or substitute teachers would be another example here, and then, so it was issues like my paycheck stub isn't accurate, I'm having health benefits, um, removed when I'm no longer on that plan, so on the one hand, it's payroll, on the other hand, it is the investment and benefits program, um, that people were describing as well, with a real concern about interest lost on money that should have been put in there, uh, whether it's properly going to be credited on their W-two forms for income tax purposes, all those kinds of things. So what was decided last night, and I want to acknowledge Josh Aberman, who did such a good job taking the notes last night and, and documenting what people's questions were, so that we, the board, this is the supervisory union board at this point, um, made a commitment, uh, and so that therefore we can put in writing responses to all those questions that the public put forward. And so what Lynn was showing, Dr. Carey was showing a little while ago on the little laptop there, um, was that the questions are, have already been posted to the website, which is great, and people can add additional questions, uh, if they'd like, and we are actively working now.
Yes.
On getting the responses to all of those questions, while the finance team is also continuing to work to fix all the problems that created this, uh, in the first place. So I think, you know, from a, a public, a community perspective for a moment, this is a very difficult situation, um, that we've all been dealing with, and people were, you know, so characteristic of, of where we live, people were really respectful, they were listening to one another, people offered their concerns, the board listened and listened as did the staff, the administration, and, um, by documenting what the questions and the problems are and being accountable for providing answers and we hope remedies very quickly, you know, we're at least able to move forward from, it's not solved yet, yes, it's really not solved yet, but we're making progress and there have been, uh, some improvements. Um, and so that's, that, that was the first part of the meeting, the first hour and a half, and then we went to the business, uh, which then did lead to the supervisory union board approving the budget, uh, as it was, um, recommended by the committee.
Um, a couple additional points, you've really covered ninety-nine percent of this quite well. Um, we, we start talking about buses afterwards, we, after we decided to cut a bus, we decided maybe we ought to look and see if we actually could cut a bus, we'd already approved the budget to cut a bus, um, and, uh, our transportation folks kind of smiled and said, I, you know, maybe this will happen, but chances are actually maybe it won't, uh, because the buses are in, a couple of them are really rough shape, um, committed not to doing deficit spending, I think we all are, uh, at the SU. The, uh, other place that we have some flexibility but not a lot is this district supervisor, not the district, but the supervisory union as a whole, really has a significant, uh, significantly larger staffing in, um, in support and paraprofessionals compared to a lot of other districts, and it's really noticeable when you start to do comparisons, but it's not the sort of thing you are just gonna stick, uh, stick a number up and say, we're gonna cut it to X, we're gonna change it to this with just a few days of research, that's not how this works in the real world, and it is my hope that, uh, that if the, if our optimistic forecast on the bus doesn't come to pass, that our pessimistic forecast on the, uh, on the, uh, professional staffing will be the place that can be looked at during the time that you all have been given, and really that's what we were doing last night, was saying, yeah, we're, we're making the cut of this line item, the bottom line figure is a real one, and we both know that this is the one place where it'll take a lot of planning, it'll be painful, but you'll have essentially nine months to do it, so.
Yeah, the director's special.
Get on with it, as it were. So, there you go. Uh, I just want people to understand, uh, when, when they vote on budgets, they vote on the bottom-line budget, they don't vote on whether or not the cafeteria budget is correct or not, they vote on the whole thing. We, we may actually have an item or two where we set them out for approval, but generally it's a bad practice, uh, and we ask people to vote on the, on, on the dollar figure, uh, the bottom line. Um, thank you. Uh, question?
Yeah, just a, a question. Um, and I wasn't there last night, though I did read the minutes, and I think it was a really good idea to put them up right away, even though they're not approved and so on because of the public nature of it all.
Right.
But, um.
Well, give Suzie Small here a chance to look at the minutes so she can figure out what she's gonna write when she writes for a forum article.
But that is that, you know, the, the, in, in this case, the six-person board is the board that hires and fires the teachers and is ultimately responsible for paying the teachers. And it contracts, in a sense, with the supervisory union, the supervisory union office provides a service of figuring out the payroll, for instance. And because of the software issues that are, that are being used, that, that payroll program seems to be so clunky, so hard to work.
The strangles.
I wonder whether, I wonder whether the, the question has come up, would it be, work better, would it be more cheaper possibly to hire a payroll service company, which I hire for my farm, employees, for instance, uh, to do the, the payroll, uh, work, rather than have it done through the supervisory union?
In case you're not, I actually know some of this, but why don't you?
I know that, that, that has been considered. I, I think if you look backwards too, it's come to a head now, but if you look backwards at the Grafton, and you probably weren't that aware, but Grafton has been having, Grafton employees have been having trouble since the summer.
Since last.
And there was a lot of talk about, well, this person had to leave and this person came and this happened and this, this has been happening, um, since they went live on July. Now, they started on January first, going with the e-finance. The person we had at that time didn't want to do it, so they stayed with ADS. Then when we went, starting a whole new year, everything had to be pushed over, instead of doing it earlier, everything had to be pushed over, so in the summer, there were people working that didn't, didn't get paid at all from here, and they only moved Grafton first, and then every pay period, there was a problem with the Grafton.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, there's a ton of overtime and all this and this, and, and then it just trickled down into, all of a sudden, everybody was impacted, we took away the contracts, we brought them downstairs to make more time to be working on this, to offer help upstairs, and so Sue and Nicole were doing all the contracts.
Transient to finance auxiliaries, yeah, that did get mentioned once.
And we tried everything, and, and the problem is, Chris didn't inherit, this, these decisions were made before Chris came, he inherited these, and, you know, as, as Cheryl pointed out, these are horrible situations people are finding themselves into. Um, I will say, it's kind of contained to stipends and after-school, you know, whatever, those little pieces where I'm working an hour here, I should get, but the 403B.
Your temp in part, your temp and your substitute teaching stuff is still a complete disaster.
But the 403B was, was a shock.
Right.
That we didn't know about, maybe somebody else, but we didn't know, so it's just kind of tumbling and we're finding out more, and so now we have a new person, well, every day we're finding out this and this, and so it's, it's just, it's complicated, but I think people are forgetting that this started back in July, and it, it had to do, you know, the other person was here, so things were not perfect when the other person was here. It wasn't the change of people.
I'm not surprised, I'm not surprised, we don't all understand our pay stubs anyway, much less analyze them every time we get them, so.
So the.
Not surprised, it takes a while.
So the idea is to really get a forensic person in there to really look and set everything straight.
And that was one of the things that did come out of the meeting last night, and I just got, was on the phone a lot this morning with Edie, uh, and said, it's, you know, in hindsight, you should have, uh, you should have gone to one of the, uh, temp agencies, like, you know, Count Temps or somebody, and brought in a payroll corp, because that's the one thing that the program is not so idiosyncratic Vermont state government-ish that you could actually, uh, make sense of it if you weren't a, a specialist in it. Um, be that as it may, uh, I think we made it pretty clear in our discussion last night that, uh, if the, um, SU needs to bring in third-party auditors to help clean this up, uh, this would be money well spent because we're already, we have some legal liability issues. well-spent, because we're already, we have some legal liability issues that make this look fairly minor compared to the expense of bringing in an audit team, so let's just get it cleaned up. It's, I will say, I did a lot of deep dives into this, you know, and it's very clear to me that the problems that we had were not known to administration, they were fairly late in the process, people were not communicating internally. It's very clear that part of how people were getting paid during, in Athens, the Grafton, and as the program rolled out, was initially, not by using the software, but by essentially bypassing it, which, if you've got bad software, means you've got, you have no audit control, and you start to get these screwy numbers. When you're paying your benefits through the software, but you're actually writing the checks, sort of doing a workaround, what you end up is, the system thinks that your benefits are seven hundred times what your payroll is, which is why when we saw those figures for four hundred dollars for your stipends, and four thousand dollars for your benefits, we all said, something's insane here, that's what it was coming from. And again, this is, you know, had there been, and I kind of, your IT guy kind of should have been picking up on this, but that's water over the dam, because those types of things, you know automatically what the problem is, and, you know, you guys aren't IT people, you're not supposed to be, but you do have somebody, and they should have thrown the flag on this, because you shouldn't have gone out all the way to November, and then had that complete car crash we had. It's, you know, it's the way it is. Onward, we don't have policy, because our policy member isn't here, and we haven't had a policy meeting in a dog's age yet, the SU, something else you gotta do. I'm going to, because of the time, and because this is essentially informational meeting, what I'd like to do is take the three and four town board committees, and six A community relations, and smash them together, and talk about the one thing that people have done since the last we met, which is they've gone to their individual towns to start setting up the advisory commission, in Larry Slayson's language, or town committee, depending on what you've done, and thought, this is a big chance to ask you all where that is.
Right, but I'd be happy to put you in.
Well, each town, you know, Lynn's going to fill us in on Athens, and I'll do the Grafton version.
Okay, would you let me start?
Yes, I would.
Okay. First, I just want to say that Cheryl and I went to the Supreme Court meeting a week ago in Middlebury, a very sort of exciting thing, where they heard the oral arguments related to the thirty-three towns lawsuit against forced merger, and they were one of three hundred and fifty or four hundred people in attendance, so it was kind of an exciting place to be and see how the Supreme Court works. The Supreme Court also will be, on February nineteen, will be hearing a case from the Huntington, specifically the Huntington School District, which voted four times against merger, and then were merged, and they had their own, they didn't join the thirty-three towns, they had their own lawsuit. So the Supreme Court, I think, is going to be pooling, making a decision regarding all of the districts after that point. Probably not immediately after that, maybe, maybe by town meeting time, unlikely, but anyway, that's the timing of that. Several of us went to the Westminster Select Board meeting, and with a, in Westminster, we ended up having a petition that roughly a hundred and thirty people signed, asking for a warning on the town meeting article, or a set of articles, I should say, an article on the town meeting warning, that would set up a five-person school advisory board, and then would allow for the election of those people, assuming that the first article was approved by the town. And that that board would be there to, assuming the Supreme Court approves what the state did in merging the districts, that board would be there to advise essentially the modified, I mean, the merged board, this board.
This board being transitional now, but if there were, then.
An elected board.
An elected board, yeah.
An elected board, in kind of all aspects of what it does, but most particularly, being involved in helping, I hope, set up some articles of agreement that are more appropriate to our area and our schools than what the state came up with in the set of articles.
Lynn, you want to run your experiences with the Athens Select Board?
Well, Jack and I presented the idea to the Select Board, we presented Mr. Slayson's version, and there was another gentleman from town here that.
Al Sands came.
Al Sands, who had come in with a different word that made it so they didn't have to have an election, it just was appointees from the Select Board, and that's the way our board went, they made it pretty simple, just the advisory committee would be consisting of three members to be appointed by the Select Board, it'd be called the Athens Advisory Commission, to advise on the WESU on budget facilities and other matters of interest.
We're, the, in Grafton, we've gone to the Select Board a couple of times, and anticipate going back one more time before the final language is adopted. Those that have been familiar with Larry Slayson and town attorney here in Grafton won't be surprised to know they had slightly different recommendations, such has been my life. What has, what we will do, irrespective of the selection process, and I'm still trying to have these be elected bodies in at least two of the three towns, is that the Articles of Agreement, to span the difference, essentially would recognize that it will be our expectation that each town shall set up a town committee or commission to advise on educational matters, and to deal with issues, including those of where there's property owned by the town, this is a hint for the folks in Westminster, and that the language about the type of consulting that will be done has to be in the articles, that they'll be the final, they'll really govern what's done, and Larry's sent me a list of what they can't say, and it really sounds like the advice is something that we get to decide on whether we want to listen or not. I think that if the towns own the buildings, that suddenly the stakes change, and you can insert yourself much more effectively in terms of the advice you give. I, you know, this is, Lynn, that is a possibility for Westminster, it's probably, makes more sense even now, more now than it did before, that we go that way, and we'll probably have to figure out a way to have the town of Athens co-own the school here at some point. But that's a future, you know, a couple of years down the line, when somebody else is in this chair, hopefully. So, that's the story there. Governance, 6B. We need to have a working meeting sooner rather than later, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask David to be involved, and I want Jessa to be involved, because you're going to be here, and I want you to be involved, and let's just sit down, actually, everybody, it's a small board, and weigh this thing out, you know, by the article. We have, I've got a lot of language from Larry, I've got a lot of questions in from Larry about additional language, I've got some questions in to David Kelly for some of the models that they've looked at, and we need to have a draft Articles of Agreement, and we really should have it now, but we need to get it done in the next thirty days, and I just think that's at least two fairly lengthy sessions to be done, we can, it could be done anytime, we just have to warrant it and do it, and sit down with lots of paper and computers and grind this thing out. Because if we don't do it that way, I'm just going to provide one, and that would be kind of high-handed, and while I'm capable of that, I really think that, well, you know, let's try to do this collegially, but I've got a deadline, and we're going to have one. So we're going to get it done, whether it's collegially or I just become dictator for a week and knock something out. We've been operating, we should have had an Articles of Agreement, as far as the state's concerned, a year and a half ago. We have done a lot of dancing, very dangerously, had lawyers that have been very helpful in stating positive opinions to keep us out of trouble, but at some point, they're going to stop doing that, I've had some warnings in that regard, so we need to get this thing nailed down. What I'm anticipating is essentially a conditional Articles of Agreement, with language right in them, that says it's reversed automatically to the individual towns if the state approves the appeal to the Supreme Court, something most articles don't have, but we will do that. We also have, and this is important, we have some deadline issues that I haven't figured out how we address. Jessica Westgar's term ends in 2020, and whether that ends on March, you know, the town meeting day, 2020, or our meeting day, 2020, is not clear. I believe, is it you? That also has a 2020 expiration date, and I think there's somebody on the West, is it you or Charles, somebody else is.
Probably me.
Yeah, and so, so we are in a position where we really need to get stuff done, because we could literally be in a situation where we can't meet in March, which would be very unfortunate.
Yeah, no, whatever your terms were on the previous district boards, has no bearing on whether you are a transitional board member.
Well, I thought so until earlier this week, and there's at least one lawyer, not ours, who thinks that's a problem, so.
And our attorney, Mr. Slayson, does not think that's a problem.
Well, the issue is, I want to get this, I want to get this tidied up. He hasn't given us a written opinion to that effect, what you say on the telephone doesn't count if you have to go before the state to justify itself.
No, I do think, I'll go back to my records, but I think we do have something written from him on that.
Okay, I would certainly appreciate that, I'm just, I'm concerned, again, I want to get, I want to get as much of this stuff nailed down, tidied up, put in a box, with a report, with a printed budget, with something printed for the voters as soon as we possibly can, because we're asking the voters to do, to approve Articles of Agreement, that so far nobody's seen, we're asking them to approve a budget, that's still a confusing thing because of the way it's structured, and they're confusing anyway, we're asking them to nominate and vote for leadership for the new district, and we're telling them, even as we're doing all that, that none of this may mean anything, because we're going to, we could unwind it all two weeks later, through the Supreme Court rule, and that's a lot to ask voters, you know, to go to the high school and sit around and chew this over for two hours, or whatever it might be, I just, you know, we got to be attentive to the patience of folks who've been pretty patient with us for more than a year now.
Jack, if I could just say, Jack, related to this, when we had the Governance Committee meeting.
Yeah.
That you and David co-convened December fourth.
Right.
At that point in time, I did ask Attorney Slayson about the authority of the town school boards, and we put this in our minutes, which we can't approve tonight.
Right.
Because we're not taking action, but we will in an upcoming meeting.
That will help us.
And then Mr. Slayson, you know, I'm just exhorting, but the Transitional Board, which is those of us, even with our terms coming up, the Transitional Board serves as the new union district board, and shall have all authority granted to the new union district board, and authority otherwise by law, until such time the new union board members are duly elected, sworn in, and convene their first meeting.
I think that the point that this state attorney was making is, what if you win? What if you win, and it's May, or what if you win, and it's, you know, it's between March and April, who's running your school? If you're a board member, if you've got expired board members all over the place, how are we handling that? And that's the question, because if their term expired in March, and we're still doing the stuff, or we, this was originally a thought about postponing the election for another month or so, just to give people a breather, well, the pushback was, actually, that'd be a really bad idea, because you could win this thing, and you won't have anybody to run your school for a couple of months, you have to meet once a month by law, and how's that going to work? So I thought it was a point worth putting out there.
But more importantly, right now, you want to try to get a schedule of meetings, and.
Yes, yes. What I'm going to do is, I'll send one of those stupid monkey survey things out, and we'll try to get some dates down, and this is going to, I would like as many people as possible, but this is going to be informal drafting, if you show up, you get to make decisions, if you don't get to show up, you get to say, well, those look like good decisions to me, I wish I was there.
I'll just point out, sorry for interjecting, Jack, if I may.
Yeah.
That we are, we have Articles of Agreement, they were mandated by the state.
Right.
What we're talking about is amending those Articles of Agreement, whole parts of them, to make them more appropriate.
Well, it's also just so we can have some sort, so that the governance structure is appropriate, we are, we have made legal assertions about the authority, continue this indefinitely. We have also not had elections, and elections are important, we were accountable to the voters, we did, we took a shortcut and asked the voters to firm everybody in their position without expiration dates or any of that stuff, and that's a part of this that bothers me the most, is I want people to be accountable, I want voters to have a chance to vote on people, I want the numbers of board members, how they're selected, I want that stuff nailed down, just, even if all they do is supervise the closing of the unified district back to the original three-town districts, we need somebody to manage that process, and they should be, they should have the voters authorizing it. I'm not comfortable with how far out and when we've gone with this stuff, it starts to feel a little bit more Soviet Union when we're out a good year past, where we haven't had a real proper election. So with that said, we have on here to announce approved tuition, we're clearly not doing that, we're not approving a budget, because there wasn't one available, we're, seven was the approved going out to rebid the roof at W. We're, seven was the approved going out to rebid the roof at West, we do not have a quorum, sorry about that. We can call a special meeting when we've got four people to do it.
Or the three of us could get up on the roof.
Actually, you know, if, this is the sort of thing I would say, but I really try not to, I'm trying to behave. Appointments, again, can't approve anybody, even if you had somebody, we're down to director's comments, and it's, I wanted to go home a half an hour ago. So, yes.
I need to know, if possible, what our monthly meeting days are. Do we have one day a month, and we switch between the two towns, or are there two days a month?
We had originally said that there would be one day a month during budget cycle, there would be the second meeting, so that we could do budgets. That's been sort of blown up for obvious reasons. I think this coming, in, this coming February, we'll be lucky if we can keep it down to, because we're trying to get all this work done. But, but I would say one meeting, and this is that meeting time, it was what I have in my notes.
And it's the third Thursday.
The third Thursday.
We had a similar approach in Westminster, where we said, it was first and third, you know, here, for this board, we said first and third Thursdays. We said the first Thursday, if needed--
Right.
--for some reason, but the third Thursday would be--
Be mandatory.
--the official meeting day, and that's where we are now.
Okay, so that's what I'll submit then to the gentleman that's collecting all the--
Yeah, and we--
--right business days.
And we need to have that in all the town reports, anyway. And we also need to do it, because our poor fact TV folks have been trying to figure out when on earth we meet, and found him, found him in his car tonight waiting for us. That's not okay.
And we do alternate between the towns, we have alternated between, from meeting to meeting.
Right, and that's--
Well, they'll just have to check--
Yeah.
--and figure out where they're at, because they've been out for a lot of months.
Well, yeah, and, you know, I'm open to changing that, if that just feels too awkward for folks. And, and that's how we'll, we'll proceed, so--
But for now, because we need to know this by Friday.
First, first and third.
So, Jack, it says we're already on budget, and given the seriousness and the need for a budget, if we have new numbers from Edie--
I will try to get within, you know, do the 48-hour notification, and off we go to the races kind of thing.
For February 6?
For February 6. And what I will do in addition to that is, we'll, do you have Skype or FaceTime or any of those fun things?
I do.
Okay. Well, I've got, I brought these to show that I had two iPads, so we could put them out, and, you know, everybody, you could split the screen, and you could FaceTime, and everybody could see it.
Three meetings at once.
Yeah, kind of that. Well, you know, people, people are out of state doing other stuff, and we need a quorum. It's better than trying to do it on a little tiny cellphone, which I've done, and that's just disastrous.
As have you.
Marginally better, and that's the plan. My kids actually bought this for me, specifically for that in mind, so, yay, kids. So, there you go. I think we're now, since we've discovered, we've just talked about the date of the next meeting, is on the 6th of February.
5:30 for a budget?
5:30 for a budget, God willing, and, and 6:30 for the regular meeting.
I'm not, not, I don't think you want to do that.
Oh, if I--
5:30 for a Budget Committee meeting on February 6, and then a full board meeting preceded by a Budget Committee meeting on the 20th, probably?
Well--
What do you think?
Here's, here's the thing, here's the thing. I would normally agree with that. I am thinking that I wouldn't mind having that sixth date as a work, as a, as an informal work, as a committee meeting of the, of the Governance Committee, so we can start to knock out some of the, some of the draft of the Articles of Agreement. But that depends on my Governance Committee being available, Governance Committee?
Well, assuming there are, are budget figures, we definitely need to be addressing budget issues--
We also should approve it that night, if we--
On February 6.
Yeah.
And, you know, it, I don't know how, so, that's, for one thing, that, that definitely needs to be addressed. Combining, or having a, a second committee meeting that's a Governance Committee meeting--
Think might be too much.
--may well be worthwhile, but it really depends on--
We could put it on the agenda, if you just, and, and the people that approve the budget, hopefully, or not. And that way, we have that second date, if we have run into a snag. As I said, I'm, I'm, I am thinking that there may be an art, an item or two that are of special interest, where we may set them out as separate articles, which you can do to a limited extent. And I think it solves the one potential controversy area I proceed on budgets as a way of dealing with it. But we gotta check with Edie and see if he's got them, but let's set it up for the 6, because that's, and I'll, I'll send you something around, and you'll all be surprised and amazed at what I put on it.
So are we saying we're having both meetings on the 6?
We're gonna, we're gonna have both meetings on the 6. And there may be a breakout. And while I'm at it, I'm sorry, while I'm at it, I, I know that at least one of our guests, if not both of them, have expressed some interest in, in the Advisory Committee. And we, when we have committees, they tend, they, we, we have what I call open committees. That's partly because it's been, it was practice at the high school when I, when David Clark and I set up that style, and we've used it to do, to do the first set of governance documents back when we were Article 9 times. It's our way of being able to bring in our former board members to our meetings and have them sit at the table, such as David is doing. And when we get to the committee stuff, if you wanna, if you'd like me to send you drafts, and want to get your feet wet, that, you, this is a chance. I'm not making you do it, I'm not obligating you to do it, but if you'd like to do it, that'd be, that'd be a thing to, you know, get, you certainly--
I'll talk with you.
Huh?
I'll talk with you.
Okay, that's fair. I am now entertaining a motion thing. Oh, no, I'm not, apparently I'm not.
We need to go into executive session.
We can't make a decision or anything.
For information purposes only, it would be--
On a legal matter?
It is a legal matter.
Okay, I think I know what that is. So I will entertain a motion to, to go into executive session. Thank everyone who came, thank, especially some of you who've been out for a couple nights, to thank, thank you for expressing interest.
Who made the motion?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.